Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for being with us this evening. We're happy that you are here. We are happy to have members of the District Leadership Team and Board of Education here with us tonight as well. My name is Heather Cole and I'm the District Diversity Coordinator. With me tonight is also Shannon Griffin, District K-12 Diversity Chair and Jackie Merkel, Supervisor of Equity and Inclusion. Jackie is here with us in a listening capacity tonight as she is feeling under the weather. But both Jackie and Shannon will be participating in the chat feature to answer questions and provide additional information. We are excited to welcome everyone tonight and even more excited to hear from the public participants that have signed up to share their ideas with us this evening. We have several things that we want to go over with you and share with you before we get to that portion. We want to let you know that this meeting will be recorded and posted to the Equity and Inclusion page on the website. Each Town Hall will run exactly the same in terms of the welcome, the ground rules, the community norms, and the closing. The only difference in each evening will obviously be those per public participations and the topics they choose to bring forth to the group. And moving to more important matters, we would be very remiss if we did not start off tonight's Town Hall by acknowledging the movement Dear OLSD Students, our very own Olentangi Dear OLSD Students and Alumni have sparked across central Ohio and beyond school districts. Although it is painful to read their words, I speak on behalf of the Equity and Inclusion Team to say that we are extremely proud of their courage to speak out with a conviction that is stronger than ever. We continue to read the letters daily and we will continue to listen and learn from them. There are no words really to capture the array of emotions we've experienced while reading these, but we know our students deserve better. Their vulnerability, their honesty, and their empowerment to speak up is an inspiration and brings to the forefront a collective urgency to making the necessary change. We hope to be able to work in conjunction with members of Dear OLSD as well as community members and staff to identify action items for immediate and long-term work. We wanted to share with you some things that are happening in the district. One very, very exciting piece is that the District Leadership Team has approved a full-time teacher on special assignment with the title of District Diversity Coordinator, exactly like the one I hold, except this newly created position will be full-time. The position was posted yesterday morning and will be up on the district website until Saturday. If I may, if everyone could just make sure that you have your microphone on mute. There's a little taskbar. And if you can have your microphone on mute, that will just kind of help out with the background noise. Thank you so much. The District Leadership Team recognizes that the scope of this work is massive. And if we want to see the progress we are truly striving for, additional resources were needed on the Equity and Inclusion Team. So we are thrilled to add this position. With their support, we will be able to place additional resources behind professional development, curriculum projects, recruitment, hiring, and retention initiatives, as well as expanding community and student collaboration. There are plans. We also wanted to, you know, take an opportunity to briefly share the plans of the upcoming school year that are already in the works at this point that, you know, we're kind of just pulling things together, getting people's ideas, but they are on the books for 2020. The first one is around professional development. During the school year, staff members have the opportunity to engage in professional learning in a variety of different formats. Our most common forms of professional development include self-selection courses offered for salary advancement and continuous learning credits. There's also building-level professional development opportunities such as book studies, as well as three district-provided professional development days throughout the school year. This year, the focus of our district-wide PD for 2020 is anti-racism and sense of belonging. What that means is that all staff, certified, classified, and administrative will receive training around topics such as implicit bias, microaggressions, explicit racism, racism, and systemic and individual racism, among other topics. We'll focus on language, practices, and age-appropriate ways to teach and lead for anti-racism. We want to assure you that this will be a collaborative process which involves stakeholders at all levels contributing to the formation and the development of these sessions. We encourage you to stay connected to the district communications that come out to learn more about these opportunities. We would love to have your insight, your feedback, and your thoughts. The second commitment this coming school year is we will ensure Black History Month is visible, highlighted, and celebrated in every building across the district. This effort will involve resources for integrating not just the struggles and oppression, but the resistance, achievements, and contributions of African-Americans. It is also important to us that while we work to ensure this month expressly is dedicated to Black history, the integration of Black history will not and cannot be relegated to a single month. Rather, will be a part of our students' learning throughout the year. So we will be working with administrators, diversity liaisons, and building leadership staff to support what that looks like. If I can just remind everybody once again, if you could please mute your mics. I'm getting some background noise, so if everybody has their own mic muted, then we can make sure that everybody can hear whoever the speaker is at the time. Thank you so much. Having said that about Black History Month, the third commitment is that the Equity and Inclusion Team will be undertaking a curriculum project where we'll work with teams of teachers at each level and content area to identify entry points for diversity, what's missing in terms of history and representation, where is fruitful ground for more integration, and what resources can we use to support us with that? This collaborative project will happen over a multi-year period. Lastly, is our Student Equity Steering Committee. This is a group of high school students that began to meet at the end of winter, the beginning of spring last year, while we only were able to meet twice before COVID-19. These meetings and collaborative efforts will expand throughout the 2020-21 school year. The committee is comprised of a diverse cross-section of our student body with approximately four high school students representing each building. The students in this group are growing their capacity for leadership in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And thus far, we have worked to build culture, strong relationships, and honest respect within the group, but we see these student leaders as a part of the collaborative planning process and will work to empower them as agents of change within our buildings. Our goal is also to begin a similar committee at the middle school level in the upcoming year. So for the purpose of tonight's Town Hall, we want to kind of talk about the purpose. We want to recognize that many of you in attendance tonight have been vocal advocates of anti-racism for many years. This is not your first time being involved. You have shown up to our diversity committee meetings, board meetings, one community conference, your principal's office, your superintendent's office, and so many other places to advocate for change. We are thankful for your voice, your efforts, and your spirit that you have brought for many others. This might be your first time tuning in and you've just started out on your journey with anti-racism, equity, and inclusion. If this rings true to your experience, we are happy to have you here with us tonight as well. And I think it's a good reminder for all of us this evening that we're coming from many different entry points. But our common goal is the same, to make sure that our students feel safe, valued, and supported. Unfortunately, due to COVID-19, we were unable to hold this Town Hall in person as we would have liked. Definitely better in person, but the topics we are discussing today are too important to be placed on the back burner until we can meet up face-to-face. So please consider this Town Hall the first opportunity of many where we will continue to engage and collaborate with you to actualize the schools and the district conditions we want to see for our students. We also recognize that while the focus of tonight's meeting is racial justice, issues of identity and oppression are intersectional and intertwined. You can't really pull them apart. We must make every effort to root out racism, sexism, heterosexism, transphobia, antisemitism, islamophobia, ableism, and any other form of oppression that exists in our schools and communities. We would like to go over some, just a few quick ground rules that will help the logistics run smoothly if you don't mind. So the first is the camera. It's completely up to you whether or not you'd like to, your camera on or off during the discussion. Your faces will show up at the bottom as thumbnails, but again, it's up to you whether you want that camera on or off. Second, your microphone. As we've said, well, I think everybody has been muted, but if you take it off, then you have to mute yourself back. So we're doing this just to minimize background noise. So when it's your turn as a public participant, please be sure to unmute yourself using that icon there in the taskbar and then re-mute yourself when your public participation portion is complete. That will be a lot of help. The third, for the public participation pieces, each person will have five minutes to share your ideas with the group, your action items, your suggestions, your recommendations. And we've included a timer on the screen to help manage the time. I hope that helps. And last, the chat participation. So everyone listening this evening has the option to utilize the chat feature throughout the event to add ideas, questions, or thoughts for consideration while the public participant is sharing their action items. To access the chat conversation, make sure that you click on the button that says "Show Conversation." If you keep that up, if you keep that clicked, you'll be able to view and participate in the chat feature the entire time. So we encourage you to do that. Quickly, we will go over the norms. The first one is to listen with empathy and to seek to understand different viewpoints. So some of the, you know, pitfalls of truly understanding people are hearing that counter-narrative in your head and sort of the rebuttals or how you're disagreeing or, you know, cheerleading, whatever it is, but truly just listen with empathy and to try to hear and to try to understand. The other piece is challenging ideas, not people. So trying not to make it personal. And as the speaker, trying to do that as well, is that if there are chat comments that it's not so much about you, but maybe just the ideas and that we're just broadening that perspective. Another one is to engage with others by communicating on topic and in a professional manner, which leads to the next one. Attacks and profanity, whether written or spoken, will not be tolerated as they threaten the safety of our community. And so I hope we don't have to do this, but you know, should we need to, you know, take someone out of a chat or delete pieces that is there just to maintain the safety of our community. The format and the flow of how this public participation will go, which we are about to head into, is, like I said, each public participant speaker will have five minutes each using that timer. We will ask at the end of that five minutes to kind of wrap up your thoughts. And then, due to the fact that we have so many and it's exciting that we do have so many, the Equity and Inclusion Team may or may not be able to respond or add a piece, you know, to that speaker's topic. If we can, we will, but as you'll see in one of the slides here, that we have a lot of speakers and we want to make sure that we honor everybody that has signed up and that they have enough time to speak. So, and then the last piece, the listening participants, which we have said is that making sure that you utilize the chat feature throughout all portions of the event to share your thoughts, your comments, your questions, or related action items that you have possibly to one of the public participants' suggestions. So at this time, we'd like to invite the first public participant, Antonio Caffey, to unmute their mic. Antonio, did I pronounce your name correctly? If you can go ahead and unmute yourself, if you would like to, if you choose to share your camera, you can do that now as well. Is Antonio Caffey here? Okay. Maybe we can put a chat, a piece there. Antonio, if you join us, you know, let us know you're here so that we can place him somewhere down the line this evening. The next person then is going to be Jessica Selway. Jessica Selway, are you here with us?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for participating. We encourage you to begin at this point. Thank you.
So you just went, sorry, I'm a little confused. I just need to kind of state my... I guess the biggest thing, and Heather, you already said it, is that I think as a teacher, I teach at Liberty High School, we need professional development that's mandatory regarding diversity and inclusion. And then I teach in the Social Studies Department and I love that there's a lot of discussion about looking at the curriculum. And we need a lot of support there. Myself, as well as my colleagues, would just really benefit greatly, I think, from spending a lot more time kind of re-looking at our content and remembering that in our collegiate experiences, that this is something where we too have been taught history a certain way. And so we often teach what we know. And anything outside our collegiate experiences, we've had to like read on our own a lot of the times. And so just, I think for me, the thing I want to bring to the table is just professional development and continuous support, looking at curriculum and diversity and inclusion specifically for social studies teachers. There's many things that can be said and ways we can be supported across the district and support our students, to support our students better. But that's, that's the big thing that I wanted to say and share.
Thank you, Jessica. I think you're exactly right. I think that our teacher education programs might not have addressed it in the way that we now want to be responsible to our students. And so how do we fill in those gaps and how do we do it quickly so that we're not missing our students? So at this point, I guess using the chat feature or, and/or, yeah, using the chat feature, I guess, encouraging the group to put forth some of your ideas. So she is specifically in high school, but you know, it could be cross-grade level. This is definitely something that we are going to be working on and is going to be an initiative, that we want multiple stakeholder voices you know, to join forces on. And so I guess I would love to put it to the group so that we can get as many great suggestions as possible. How do you see that looking? Like, maybe that task force or maybe that input process? Or maybe there are specific resources that you are, and I'm not just speaking with, to you, Jessica, but just the group at large, but resources that you would love for the decision-making team to look at when we're, when we're, you know, putting together that professional development. So I guess just taking a second and using the chat bar to make those suggestions. Partnership with Kerwin Institute. I think that that's a fantastic idea. They put amazing stuff out. Thank you, Lee Glass. Teaching tolerance. I want to let everybody know that these ideas will be curated. They will not go away after our our time together tonight. So you will be able to see these. Delaware African-American Heritage Council. Thank you, Dawn. Matthew K. was certainly wonderful. And you're right, Joshua, just, it starts at very young ages. We know that that, I mean, research does inform us about how exactly young, unfortunately, that it starts and that the conversation does need to happen. And of course, this needs to happen in age-appropriate ways and delivery methods. And we will certainly, most certainly, keep that in mind. Okay, I would say another minute and then we will move on to the next. If you want to kind of continue adding your thoughts on professional development and then we will move on to the next public participant. Looking at Pioneer Day, how to add that Black and Indigenous conversation there as well, yes? Okay. At this time, I think I would like to invite Neil Hariths. I hope that I said your last name correctly. If I didn't, I'd like to encourage everybody. I'm just going to state that if I do not pronounce it correctly, I would love for you to correct me so that not only myself, but everyone involved here knows how to pronounce it correctly. Neil Hariths, are you here with us? If so, just look at the taskbar there and click the microphone so that there is not a line going through it. If you choose to share your camera, do the same with your camera. I'll give Neil another 10 seconds. Hopefully he's here. If not, again, we will absolutely provide the time at the end if he's just not here with us yet. Carol Randolph, are you here with us? Kara Randolph. Okay. I know that Shawnee is with us because I saw her earlier.
I am here.
All right. Would you like to go ahead? Thank you so much for participating.
Absolutely. Hi. My name's Shawnee Plakka. I'm a parent, teacher, and member of the Olentangi community. This district has done a lot for my family. My children have succeeded athletically, academically. My older ones actually attend Northwestern University, both on academic and athletic scholarship. We kept our children in the district because we really believe it is a great school district. I'm just sad to say that, you know, some of our experiences are bringing to light this, both the microaggression and the direct racism that our students of color, our people of color have had to cope with. And I stand here before you to share those concerns. There's that Earn the Relying current in our community that's ignited that movement @dearolsd. These are the voices of our children. My own children, gut-wrenching, painful. If you now had a chance to take a look at those, make sure you do, but be prepared. These are the voices of students that have been alone in their silence. These are the students that are afraid to be that person of color. In fact, this morning I woke up and I thought, oh my gosh, I'm afraid to be that person of color. @dearolsd, it's really shouting at us because if one of these exists in our district, then what do we really honor in our core values? Are we doing our best to build a fostering environment for all our children? These are the voices that are not included. Our students of color are coming here into the district and they're losing their own identity. They're losing their culture. I know there are times when I wonder about myself and say, you know, who am I? What do I stand for? We really try to teach each person to speak up, stand up for yourself, be brave, flourish here. But when we expect that from a 10, 12, or 16-year-old to speak up, we've placed a tremendous burden on them. We're asking each young person to take responsibility for something they themselves are still learning about and understanding. It's not easy for me as an adult to speak up against microaggressions that I receive from parents in the community, from fellow colleagues. I feel like sometimes they're very subtle, but they're there. I can share so many stories with you, but you know, each of them are still as painful today as they were when they occurred. We have to recognize the racism for what it is and bring it to light. So have we created a culture where our people of color feel safe to voice themselves? What can we do to change this? We have programs in effect, but we do need more. So I know we've mentioned the mandatory professional development for teachers across the district, but also hosted by the district. Because I really believe we must educate and recondition ourselves to understand and to be better teachers. This is a long-term commitment. The teachers that read Dear OLSD, I'm not worried about those teachers. I'm worried about the ones that read it and don't believe it, or don't read it and don't believe its existence. I think that creating a mandatory district-sponsored program for continued development, that will help. I also believe in the increased educational opportunities for our students in classroom courses. Because I'm thinking, why stop at teachers? We should provide additional courses for opportunities for our students to learn different cultures other than just the foreign language cultures. We also need help for our students to learn and understand prejudice and racism. Be kind. That is appropriate at the primary level, but anti-racism needs to be taught at the secondary level to all our students. You know, in other words, we really want our students to actively end racism. More programs and resources for teachers, I think we've talked about that. There are, in fact, specific content that help share history of marginalized groups. I know my kid's history book has like one page of Martin Luther King and very little of Black historical figures. And I think that we can change that and give teachers the resources. I believe it's important to improve our current reporting processes with appropriate discipline to follow suit for both students and teachers. Current procedures are inconsistent across the district. Without explicit evidence, I think students worry about, you know, are they going to be believed? And we really need to change it because I think administrators need to be trained on how to handle a situation and deal with those specific race issues. And they have to make a true effort in learning themselves so that, you know, we're educating our students in the process, not just discipline, but learning and reconciling the experience. So this is my call to action. This is all our call to action, I believe. I'm in a position to help and I want to fix it, to make it better. I'm glad our district has decided to step up to the call for justice. We provide a top-notch education, but we really need to exchange that for one goal, and that's a top-notch experience. We all have subconscious biases. It's important to recognize that. I know that we're all learning that and we need to know that they actually guide our reactions and interactions every day. I recognize mine and I'm still recognizing mine. And I just ask, what are yours? In fact, you might even wonder like, what am I? Who am I? But I want you to recognize, what I want you to recognize is my But I want you to recognize, what I want you to recognize is my humanity, and I believe that that's what our students want as well. So if we start there, we can help start the journey. Thank you.
Shawnee, thank you so much. You brought up so many points. I think one of the things that a lot of community members have said too is this feeling of distrust of when they share experiences, where is it going to go from there? And so there are so many of our staff members that do a great job of building strong relationships, building, understand the need for personal relationships, that they are, you know, that teachers are human as well and that to really form that bond, but there's definitely room to grow there specifically in rebuilding a trust and explicitly communicating our intentions, whether, you know, you know, maybe we haven't done a good enough job of that, of just explicitly reaching out and rebuilding that trust level so that kids can feel a sense of, yes, I can share, you know?
Well, and I just think that some of our students are really fearful of like backlash. So I feel like that, you know, that discipline level, you know, that reporting level has to be where it's not just, hey, you get detention. It's got to be more education for our students and just more of a reconciliation so that that way the student that does have, you know, that that is the victim of racism doesn't feel like, oh, okay, so now I've got to always watch my back. And I think that's what's really scaring a lot of our students.
That definitely needs to be considered as well. Thank you so much. I appreciate it, Shawnee.
Thank you.
Okay. Neil Hariths is here with us. Neil, do you want to unmute your mic and if you choose to show your camera, you can do that at this point as well?
Okay, I am unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for joining us. You can go ahead and begin.
So as we all know, racism is a huge problem. That's why we're all here. We've all read the posts on Dear OLSD. We've seen the news. Racism is everywhere and it's ruining lives. And without any change, it's not going to go anywhere either. The issue with what we're doing right now in our district is that we're not, we're being educated about racism. But what we're not doing is we're being educated more about the past when really as a problem, it exists today. It's extremely harmful and it adds to the cycle of systematic racism. The issue is fixable, but it will take time. The first step to ending racism is understanding and spreading the real stories in accounts of racism that everyone has experienced, just like they have on the Dear OLSD page. This will make all people of color, not just a select few, comfortable with sharing and reflecting upon their stories, which is an integral step. Only when we admit that there's a problem this large, we can really think about starting to fix it. The next step is a little more difficult. Systematic racism is as prevalent as it is today because of how it spreads. From a young age, we're influenced by the biases and stereotypes of our role models, whether it's teachers or parents, and whether those stereotypes and biases are good or bad. Even if we don't want to admit it, many of us have implicit racial biases, which we have learned. And if we don't change anything, we will eventually pass it down as well. As a district, I don't remember talking about racism until I was in fourth grade. And by the time people are in fourth grade, they've already started developing implicit biases and stereotypes. And even when we started talking about racism, I remember it being more about the history behind it, acting like it doesn't exist like it does today. So my suggestion is to start teaching racism, really about racism and the experiences that people of color go through from a young age, starting in first grade. Take a day out of every month, which I know is a lot, but when you're really considering it, people are losing lives and it's changing people. So one day a month, I think is worth the sacrifice. But take a moment, learn about the experiences, not in a classroom environment, because if I'm being honest, I don't remember much. I learned in my first grade classroom. So talk about experiences every year until you get to middle school so that they, everyone has a strong foundation and kind of understand what it means, what it comes from. And hopefully, we're all people and I think all of us understand that now. But what we do have to understand is that while we're learning and educating ourselves on racism, Rosa Parks Stand on the Bus was in 1955. Emmett Till's lynching was in 1955. These are all extremely recent. Many of our grandparents were around and are still around after witnessing this. Martin Luther King Jr.'s I Have a Dream speech was given in 1963. Maybe some of our parents watched. And in the 75 years, I think since 1955, we made immense progress. 75 years is no long amount of time considering how ingrained this is in our society. But I think we can expect a little bit more, but we can't expect something this ingrained in society to wash out overnight. So the process is going to be long and we have to be patient. But our goal is achievable and the work is worth, like the worth, it's worth the wait and the work. So I think the main goal is to educate and talk about experiences.
Neil, thank you so much again. Bringing up very good points, using stories, experiences, and accounts of racism to really reach people and also build that strong foundation of understanding. You talked about being patient, but then I might add, being patient with a sense of urgency as well. This work does take time. However, our kids are suffering, you know, as evident in Dear OLSD. And so, you know, we ask for patience, but we also want to communicate strongly that we have a sense of urgency in the work as well. And thank you so much for being a part of that. I appreciate it. Kara Randolph, is she here yet?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, are you ready to participate?
Yes.
Okay, thanks Kara. You can go ahead.
Okay, you ready for me now? Hold on just a second.
If you are, I can have you go later.
No, I am. I'm ready to go. Let me just pull up my
Okay.
Notes. Yeah, no problem. Okay. So first of all, let me say thank you to the brave students who started Dear OLSD, as well as students and alumni contributors. I'm sorry that so many adults that were supposed to protect you, build you up, and create equitable learning space held you over and over again. We see you, we hear you, we believe you, and we are going to do right by you moving forward. This is a whole district issue and the whole district needs to do the work. Lastly, I want to thank teachers and staff who have done right by our students and have continued to still be a part of the district where they are having to fight against injustices that their colleagues continue to perpetuate. Please be encouraged. We need you. So some of my points that I'd like to add in regards to some initiatives moving forward are diversity committee leadership should be more diverse and that there should be perhaps different divisions. So I know that there were a lot of issues for not only black students, but also other non-black students of color, as well as LGBTQ students. And so I think that if there were more divisions, then we could tackle this as a whole with different divisions within each school. So I also think if there were, and I know that there are diversity liaisons within each building, but I don't even know if every school, unless you ask, at least at my school, I didn't know who they were until I asked about it. So that's one thing that I think we can work on. And then creating perhaps a position within the schools, specifically dealing with diversity within the schools. So a actual staff personnel in the schools to help with the climate, to be someone that students can trust to speak to about issues that they may be having. The other initiative or idea for an initiative would be a parent hotline at each school. So I think that in a lot of the cases, students either told someone and they didn't handle the situation or they didn't feel comfortable telling someone. And so I think that there needs to be an outlet for students to feel like they have a safe place to go for things to be handled on their behalf. I also think that there needs to be a serious initiative on diversifying staff. I've had conversations with the district at different levels in regards to diversifying staff. And it's always, oh, we can't find black educators or we can't find them. And I think the reality is that even the ones that you can find probably don't want to come to the district because of some of the issues that they've had for years and years. And so we need to provide incentives for educators to want to come to Olentangie. They need to be supported. There needs to be incentives and I think that we have to be intentional about recruitment. I know that we already have, and I think that you as a diversity committee have created a lot of relationships from, you know, the One Community conferences. So I feel like we have a lot of resources that we aren't tapping into. So we need to use our resources better. And if that means having foster relationship with HBCUs and other universities to recruit, as well as going to Ohio colleges and specifically building relationship with professors and talk to them openly about the problems that we have in our district and that we're facing. But then also making sure that they understand that we are trying to make progress and that we'd love them to be a part of it. You may find that there are educators that want to take on that charge, especially now. And then the other one was just tapping in our resources like Hassan Jeffries and seeing if we can create maybe a visiting educator program within different districts or universities. So what that would look like essentially is having professors of color, of different varying backgrounds, socioeconomic, et cetera, coming in and teaching, not just in a whole school type platform, which I know we've had before, but actually in classes, or maybe even having a visitor professor teach a class for the year could be another idea. I'm not sure how I'm doing on time, but, oh, I see it. Okay, one minute. I think there needs to be mandatory anti-racist training for board superintendent and board members. It needs to be mandatory and not discriminatory training, just because I know that there are issues at the top and it needs to fall all the way down. The reality is that if we've been having these issues for over 15-some years that I know of, it starts with leadership. And if our leadership and people and staff would not act in the way that they have been, that our students have so bravely shared with us, if they didn't feel like they were going to be backed up or felt like there was going to be no repercussions. So there needs to be some type of repercussions for staff who do not participate in the trainings or and then also, this is one other thing where we can also have a program for teachers to be able to report other colleagues who they have seen participating in injustices with the students. So I've got a little bit more, but I know I'm running out of time. So thank you for allowing me to share and I appreciate the time.
If you, I mean, if it's super quick, please share your additional ideas.
Okay.
I know you were talking fast.
I was. I was trying to talk very fast.
30 seconds if you have, I don't know how much more.
There needs to be more with teaching empathy. I know we've already talked about increasing our guidance counselors and increasing staff within the school that can actually help with that climate and create programming within the classrooms. Also documenting, documenting, documenting for any incident that happens that can be reviewed also by a parent committee. Excuse me, and I think there needs to be a committee at the school as well. But if we were able to create a staff position within each school, I think that that would create, like that's specifically their job. I know right now it's like, oh, I'm a teacher, but then I'm also going to do the diversity thing on the side, which never really happens to the extent that we needed to happen. So if there was specific personnel that was, this is their only job, which is a huge undertaking, as you know, then I think that that's something that could help create some kind of change and also create a safe place because we know that not every school has a safe person in each building.
Kara, I mean, it's obvious from the chat over here that you, a lot of people are loving your ideas. You had from the community to professional development to the hotline, to the reporting, the empathy, the documentation. I mean, you've got a lot in there and I think, you know, we're really thankful that you took the time to participate today. And I'm excited that all of your ideas, everybody that's sharing, all of these ideas are going to be curated and they will not fall on deaf ears, I can promise you that, that we'll kind of put these together and see what is the next step for feedback, for participation, for, you know, molding these things. So thank you so much, Kara.
And I just wanted to add too, and I didn't mention this, I know we've talked about it before, is the zero tolerance policy. And I know that that's kind of, you know, included in what I said, but I just want to make sure that that's something that we actually put on paper.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Noyanika Gupta, and I hope I'm pronouncing the name correctly. If I'm not, please let me know. Are you here and ready to participate?
Yes, I'm ready to go.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep. I just want to start off by saying thank you for the platform and allowing us to speak out on these issues. I'm Noyanika. I graduated from Olentangie in 2019. So a lot of what I'll be speaking about is kind of based off of my high school experience and things that I want to see implemented like in high schools, I guess. So I know the district hosts a community conference every year and I actually got to speak at the conference in 2017. And I think it was a really, really good experience, but I did feel like I was kind of preaching to the choir because other students there were also presenters. And the only teachers that I recognized were the teachers that encouraged me to participate in this kind of conference. So my idea to kind of spread like awareness about diversity and things like that is to have an event like the community conference, but have it be more of a recurring thing, kind of like what Neil talked about, taking like a month out of or a day out of every month to have an event where we talk about different things. So kind of logistically, what I was thinking is using various commemorative months throughout the year, like we talked about Black History Month earlier. So every February, we have various conferences that could be held during school, after school. You could have like the Diversity Club, administration could call on Diversity Club to organize different events during lunch periods or study halls or host a pep rally or something like that. So we can do Black History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, Women's History Month, if you want to talk about intersectionality, and something for LGBTQ Pride Month. So there's a lot of different avenues we can go with this and it definitely does not need to be restricted within the framework of these like specific labeled months, but just so we have kind of like a map, I guess. And some ideas I had of things to discuss, like during these events, we could have librarians talk about relevant literature and books and host book talks. We could show documentaries like The Thirteenth on Netflix. Having people of color who identify with whichever heritage, share their experiences, sorry, share their experiences and talk about inequality and discrimination and address things like white privilege and how to be an ally and how to be an effective activist and really to emphasize that the goal of activism is social awareness and social justice, not a personal agenda or personal fulfillment. Like I said, the goal is to amplify people of color voices and give minorities a platform to speak. And in order to incentivize these events and make sure they're actually doing what we want them to do, I really would like to see a cultural competency requirement to things like NHS or the honors diploma. I would even argue that I think varsity athletes need to show that they have a commitment to cultural diversity and anti-racism. And these kind of awards by no means imply that someone knows everything about racism or inequality, but it really shows that they are making a commitment to social justice and encouraging their peers and being good role models for their peers. So something like if you attend two events a year, two events a semester, then you are eligible to apply for NHS along with the service hour requirement that you have. Or if you attend, let's say, six events a year, then you will get an award at senior award night and you have to do a cumulative reflective project at the end of your senior year to be eligible for this award. So I think things like that would really encourage kids to step outside what we just learn in the classroom and really seek outside information and listen to their peers, listen to people who actually experienced the things we learn about. And I think it would give clubs like Diversity Club, Young Fem, Model UN, and the Gay Street Alliance more room to grow and more influence over the student body. So that's my proposal to the district. If anyone has any questions, let me know. But yeah, thank you.
Noyanika, I'd like to say that first of all, thank you for joining us and also that I've been truly inspired by you and your peers throughout the past month. Graduates that have had their experiences and they have reflected on them and they have become a part of the movement, you know, to stand up and share their voices. And I have enjoyed hearing the voices. I have enjoyed being a part of what, you know, alumni has put on around the local area. And so I really want to thank you again for sharing tonight. And again, you gave a lot of practical. And again, you gave a lot of practical how-to ideas and ways that we can get this to the ground level with students. So, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Merv Enders, are you here with us this evening?
Can you hear me?
Yep. Hi, Merv.
All right. Hi, Heather. How are you?
Good.
First of all, thank you all for the district for hosting this discussion this evening. A lot of good ideas have been brought forth, many of which build on or are building upon things that have been done in the district now for many years. But my reason for joining this evening, many of you know I've been involved in diversity committee for the district for many years, and I had, I took a break. I took a break and as I, but as I read through the Dear OLSD, I was reminded of really one central idea, one central theme is that I saw over 200 young people, and I'm sure that that just scratches the surface, that they wanted their voices to be heard. And, you know, while the behaviors described are hurtful, what's also described that I think we need to continue to keep in the forefront of the conversation is making sure that our staff in each one of the buildings and throughout the district is equipped to deal with the situations and circumstances that they're confronted with. Because that seemed to be the big gap in what I was reading. Again, the students didn't feel like anybody was listening. They didn't have a forum. So, someone created Dear OLSD. And I liked the ideas that I heard earlier in the evening, I believe that Kara Randolph brought forward, in terms of having some sort of a escalation process, some sort of an anonymous centralized location where parents and students can go to make sure that their voices are heard, but also that their concerns are addressed. Many of us on this call work in corporate America. And if you have any of the situations that were described in Dear OLSD occur in a corporate setting, there's an HR hotline that you can call, and they have to investigate it. And I think it would be to the district's benefit to put something like that in place where situations that are reported must be followed up on. Now, the person bringing forward the information may never know the resolution, but they need to be able to have confidence that the district takes it seriously enough to address it and to nip it in the bud. So, I'm not going to use up all my time, but I'm going to leave with a question. And that is, these issues have been brought to the fore many times. You know, my son was in the district. He's a recent graduate. So, I've been associated with the district for 12 years. And I've heard these kinds of situations before. I know that there are a group of students that went to the board meeting several years ago to share their experiences. But my question that I'm going to leave with this evening is, what is the district appetite to do something different, to take a bold step that will augment the great educational experiences that our children experience with a great cultural experience? What bold steps will we take? Thank you.
Merv, thank you so much. I like your choice of words, what bold steps will you take? We have a fantastic, top-notch academic experience, and we want just as top-notch of an experience when it comes to culture and climate and well-being and safety and, you know, the social experience as well. And it's going to take bold steps to get there. So, I thank you. You have always had a good perspective throughout diversity committee and added a lot to the group. So, I thank you tonight and for all of your work that you've had since the very beginning of all of this. Yes. Thank you so much. I appreciate you taking the time tonight.
Glad to be here.
Kristy Thompson, are you here this evening?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you so much. You can go ahead and begin now, Kristy. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for letting me share my thoughts. I guess something that you had already touched on is having already liaisons about just having more people involved on your diversity and inclusion team. So, the first thing that it says next to my name is PTO Chair. I mention that because it could be someone who could partner and coordinate with these liaisons and leaders in the district to help make the diversity, the racism conversations more consistent part of the education, not just some special thing that comes up on, you know, Asian Heritage Month, Black History Month. I think that consistency in our message and in our education to the children is, will be really important. That person could also help partner with parents on, you know, broaching these very sensitive subjects and help to reinforce the inclusion at home. The home component, I think, is a huge part. And I don't know the answer, but that's just something that came to mind. Additionally, I think a big part of being able to teach our children about racism needs to include exposure and experiences to something that is different from their reality, not just reading books or a speaker every now and then. All that is good stuff, but there needs to be context for these lessons to stick. I don't know how possible this would be, but I envision forging relationships with quote-unquote sister schools, Pem-Paw programs with kids from a school in a more diverse area than Olentangie, maybe even visiting the other schools to show our children a different reality and vice versa for them. I think it is really hard to get children to understand differences without that context, and I think it needs to start early. My two children are elementary students in the district, and we need to be able to start planting the seeds of inclusion early. Now, my daughter, biracial daughter that's half Filipino and half Caucasian, in kindergarten a couple of years ago, went through a phase wanting light skin and light hair like her friends, and it broke my heart that even I, as a mother of Philippine descent, I wasn't doing enough to give her more diverse experiences to help her feel confident in herself. I don't know how maybe exactly it would shake out if that even is feasible or a possibility, but there has to be some more face-to-face element behind the education. And I think, and I've seen in the comments too, that I agree, that I echo that it should start at a young age. And that's all I really had. Short and sweet.
Thank you, Kristy. I think partnering with PTOs is a fantastic idea. Bridging the gap between, you know, the school and the family can only make for some great positive change. So, I love that idea. And like you said, those authentic experiences. And there's a lot of tools, I think, that we can access and utilize to, not tools, but just a lot of experiences that we can access and utilize to support, you know, more authentic experiences. I know there is a current teacher, Derek Birch, that started a nonprofit called Erase the Space with his colleague Amelia Gordon from Columbus City, to exchange between schools, just like you said, talk about redlining and its impact on segregation and taking action together, and they're growing their nonprofit and exchanges. And so, you know, looking at who are people and organizations that are doing this well and how are they doing it, and then how can we, you know, piggyback off of that? So, I appreciate that suggestion. Thank you so much. I appreciate your participation tonight, Kristy.
Thank you.
Andy Prather, are you here? Andy? Hopefully, he's just unmuting himself or finding where that taskbar is. Yes?
Heather, can you hear me?
Yes, your voice is going a little bit in and out. I'm not sure. Why don't you start, and we'll see if it's clear?
Okay. Can you hear me now? Is this a little better?
Yeah, it's a little better. It is going in and out, but I think we are gonna, if we, if, you know, I think we should be able to understand, yeah. Why don't you go ahead and start?
Good evening, Heather. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, Heather, and thank you for presenting this discussion regarding racial justice. It particularly touches my heart in a very profound way. My name is Andy Prather, and I am the route monitor for student management on our school buses. I work out of the east transportation office. It's important for our school community to know I will be focusing on all students to be treated with respect and dignity regardless of their cultural backgrounds. Everyone is important and entitled to a safe environment where they can learn without fear of racial bias. I want students to feel welcome and appreciated regardless if they are in the classroom or on a school bus or attending a school-sponsored extracurricular activity. I am the liaison for bus drivers, principals, students, and parents, and I do investigate issues that are brought to my attention. One of the things that's important also is to mention is the code of conduct on the bus is an extension of the school building's rules with regard to respecting of others. It's imperative that everyone practices the guidelines set forth in the students' handbooks and provide equality about our district. We at the transportation department want to be supportive, and we really appreciate this opportunity to reach out. So, just wanted to thank you again for the openness to discuss these troubling issues and the opportunity to reach out to just an incredible community.
Andy, thank you. I think it's fantastic that you joined us this evening to share that sentiment with us, because I think some people do, you know, worry about transportation and to and from, and sometimes that can be an environment that is clearly less structured and less monitored. But it is good to hear from someone that feels so strongly about these issues. And two, I guess I just encourage you, reach out to your colleagues, ask them what they want and how they want to be a part of the solution as well. We encourage all and any voices. So, I appreciate yours. Thank you for being so intentional and with us this evening.
Well, I encourage you or anyone else to, are you still there?
Yep.
Heather?
Yep, I'm still here.
I would like to encourage or others, encourage you or others to reach out to the transportation department if there's anything that we might be able to do to help implement this.
Yeah. We have, we have, like, you probably already know, we've done some work with them in the past in professional development topics in the past, and we will continue to do so. And also likewise, as far as, you know, hearing your suggestions and just appreciate your support and your willingness to, you know, include yourself in this conversation. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Emily Burbaker?
Hi, yes.
Did I pronounce it correctly?
Close Burbaker, yeah.
Thank you. Correct me. Okay. Thank you for joining us this evening. You can go ahead, please. Thank you.
All right, thanks. So, a handful of things that I wanted to talk about, mostly around goals and transparency, I guess. The transparency of the district's actions is pretty much applies to everything that I'll talk about. And just that, yeah, so the district is very transparent on the actions they're doing from here on out in combating racism. To start off, there's one idea I have. I know in different, I've taken different trainings myself, and a new word or term that I've heard very recently is that could, as a suggestion for future trainings, is liberation consciousness. So, this is from a woman, a black leadership consultant named Erica Hines that I heard this from, and it is truly addressing that as white people, we are oppressors. And everything we do, we need to acknowledge that people of color view us as oppressors. Even if we consider ourselves working in allyship, we are oppressors. And finding trainings that really help white communities specifically discuss this and acknowledge this in all of the actions they take in their life, especially in a school, I think is, in my very recent learnings of this, is exceptionally productive. Getting more into the goals that I would hope to see is, and actually Liberation Consciousness talks about this, is more of an assessing before you move forward. So, how have, how can the district assess how things have failed in the past? Taking these workshops is not new. So, to right off the bat, say, let's just keep putting teachers in workshops, is that effective? Follow along to my notes here. And then making those assessments, essentially the measures of those assessments, aware, bringing public awareness to how the district is doing. Where have we failed, where has the district failed in the past? And are you trying new things? Are training opportunities or new training opportunities going to be better for teachers in our district? And then what data can the district provide us? Can they provide us the number of teachers taking part in the workshops? Even though that's only part of it, we still need to know that those workshops were even effective. So, how can we measure the effectiveness of those teachers taking this? And that requires assessing the actual, the true problems at hand in our education system, and specifically here in our district. And then, talking about incentives, same goes for discussing incentives for teachers or students to take part in stuff. You need an assessment of how are those incentives working? And that even ties to teachers. We know their time is exceptionally limited. Keeping up with testing and curriculum as it is before we address this issue is a lot to ask of teachers. So, we need to make sure the time that we are asking and requiring them to take this necessary step to make sure all students are welcome in our society, in our district. We need to make sure those efforts are effective, or at least we're trying to measure the effectiveness of these efforts. See here, let's see. Determining these measures should involve administration and teachers, likely students, parents of students. And some, as I just tried to kind of come up with some ideas of measures would be, is there, the hotline was very interesting. Can that data anonymous be available, like the hotline use? Or even in a school, any students calling out a racist action anonymously, can that data be provided to the public? And ideally, we would see, if efforts are working, a reduction of these events over years. And understanding that there'll be trial and error, there will be efforts that will be put forth in trainings, and some of these measures won't have ideal outcomes, but still putting that information towards the public so we know that you're trying and learning. Do I have any more notes here? Oh, and a realization I had on, as I've been listening to everyone, is that stepping outside of the school district specifically, there has, there are limited outlets in Olentangie at like the community level that are discussing racism. So, like a local board, something like that, that could work for the community at large, but then also team up with the diversity members of the district would be fantastic to happen. So, that's all I got.
That's all?
Yeah.
Those are some great ideas, Emily. Thank you so much. Couple things, couple points I just wanted to pull out there is that you said, you know, how important it is for self-reflection and asking ourselves about, you know, where are we in our role and what role do we play in addressing our own biases, in also understanding how maybe, you know, people are at different vantage points, if you will. In also understanding how maybe, you know, people are at different vantage points, if you will. One of the things that I want to make sure as a district and just as an equity and inclusion team that we want to communicate is that nothing that comes from us will ever, it's not about blame and shame. Like, that's a whole topic in this field that is poignant to bring up because, you know, I think that there's, that there's a sentiment that it's almost like, okay, I'm ashamed to be white. I should feel bad about myself because I'm white. And there's, it's part of an, it's part of the identity development continuum that a lot of people have these feelings when they start to grapple with justice and equity. And so I guess I just want to put out there too, and just say, you know, those are not the conversations that we want to have. It's just true reflection and relationship-making and connecting and learning, like you said. And then also, the second piece I wanted to kind of point to that you talked about is you're so spot on in all, in, you know, the initiatives that we are bringing forth and we're working quickly to implement. How are we going to know that what we are doing is working? And so how are we measuring that? And who are the barometers? You know, it can't just be ourselves. So getting students involved, getting teachers involved, getting parents involved. And so in different ways, what, what, what that might look like. So I appreciate everything that you had to contribute, and thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Yeah, thank you for the time.
Okay. Irene, are, I believe you are the last public participant. Are you here and ready to join us? Irene Arma? Okay. I guess at this point, so we have probably just about a five-minute closing. So at this point, are there any ideas that you've heard? Or I'm sorry, that you haven't heard that you think we should consider for those of you that might be listening in? Is there someone that would like to kind of piggyback off of something? Or maybe there's something brand new that hasn't been discussed yet? We can take about seven minutes here and discuss those if you would like.
Heather?
Yep.
You know, I wanted to kind of piggyback on the mentorship program for our teachers coming into the district. We used, we did have a program like that, and I think it, I think it's time to bring that back so that when we do, when we do hire teachers of diversity, that we can help keep them within. And I'm happy to be part of that as well. So I just want to put that out there.
That's a great idea. That's, you're right, we did have it for, I want to say, like, two or three years. Probably about nine years ago, and it was, it was something that just fizzled out. However, there, you know, as far as making more intentional reach-out efforts and just a stronger, more robust program, I think that would be helpful as well. Thank you, Shawnee. Is there anyone else that has a suggestion that hasn't been brought forth? Or that maybe you want to piggyback off of someone? Or you can even use chat bar to do that as well?
Yes. I am a retired educator, and I've been on several diversity teams and committees. And one of the things I think that was most helpful is that we had cultural exchanges. Like, on a weekend, for once, like, once a quarter, we had to do something that was different from what we normally do. And I remember my friend coming to church at my church to see what church service looked like in a black church. And I went to my first bar, Miska. And what I'm saying is, is the reason why we are limited in our experiences is because everybody that we, we're around looks just like us. And so when people bring things to the table, we're clueless because we, we are judging that thing based upon what our experiences are and what they look like. So my prayer is, is that we will not just talk the talk. My grandson is a part of the, your school, Olentangie. And I'm, I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. I have never had so many, oh my goodness, experiences that were racially motivated, that it was kind of scary to me. And things that made me feel like, my goodness, do we need to take him out of that school? I'm thankful that the principal was very helpful in communicating, but no child, this is a child that loves school. He loved school. And to have to come into the environment, be new into your, to the school system, and have those experiences and be afraid sometimes to tell us. But I, I just, I want every child to come to school and feel a part of school.
Yes, absolutely.
Feel valued by the people. And it wasn't just the children who did that. It was some of the adults. Now, children, when children make decisions and do things, I'll just say, well, you know, they're a kid, and they, they, you know, just responding as a child. But these were educators who were supposed to be a little bit, a whole lot more aware. And so.
Well, I do like what you said about putting yourself out of your comfort zone, and that, that's a bold call to action. And so if we all were to do that, to put ourselves in outside of our comfort zone and to intentionally, you know, consider experiences that we might not normally have, I think that that would go a long way, just as human beings, right? I know that we have a lot of people with hands up, so I do want to get to others. But thank you so much for sharing what you did, and I appreciate you for taking the time. Joshua Lane, I see that you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did. So my question was about what are, how are we going to deal with parents who don't value this as a problem? Because if you literally think about it, it's a cultural problem at Olentangie, and it starts at home, and this prejudice starts at home. How are we going to, as a district, include parents who don't view racism as a problem anymore? Don't view sexism as a problem anymore? Don't view minority experiences as valuable experiences? How are we going to include them actively in this conversation? Because again, it starts at home. Where do we think that these situations are originating from, especially when it comes to students?
And so the question is, how are we going to engage those families?
Yeah.
I think, I think it's important, that's one of the reasons why Olentangie has always had the very large umbrella of diversity that we do, and we were very intentional about that from the very beginning. That diversity is truly about the, the various identities, you know, that you can have, the complexity, the intersectionality of those, race, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, ability. And so if, you know, we just want to encourage everyone to see themselves as part of the conversation, more so as just humans coming together to make our community better by understanding one another a little bit better. Because ultimately, what it comes down to is making sure that the students that are in our classrooms are supported and feel safe. And so, yeah, we want to make sure that the conversation is expanding. We want to make sure that more, more of our community members are getting involved. That might be one aspect that I'd like to put to the group is, what are people's ideas of? I know someone else said, you know, I felt like I was preaching to the choir when I, when I was a presenter at one community. It was a student. And so maybe if we could take a minute and just think about, how do we engage populations of our community that might not be at the table yet for one reason or another? And there's, there's a variety of reasons. But how do you think we can engage them and, and, and have it be a more complete conversation?
Um, well, if I can just continue, I think that it starts with the district taking a firm stance. And I think that I, my fear is, is that the district shies away from certain problems because it's not necessarily viewed in a certain way by the population, even though it's the correct and way that students need to feel supported in the district. And it's sad to see that things like this are becoming controversial. And I just think that it's so important and engage, it would engage the students, the, the families that don't value this. If the district takes a firm stance that, you know, all minorities are protected here. You know, our black minorities are protected here. Our, you know, our gender identities are protected here. Our religious minorities are protected here. That needs to be the firm stance regardless of the majority and the mob mentality that we see in our, in our district as a whole. I think we just need to not be afraid of the Facebook groups and the Nextdoor app groups because I think that, as a student, has contributed to a lot of the fear that we have felt coming forward with certain experiences we have had with prejudice and so on and so forth.
Yes, I, I agree with you. I, Mark's last letter that came out, you know, he was all district leadership, just listening to the Dear OLSD letters and knowing that this is not just a black racism issue, but racism in general, and just really kind of putting out there that this is not what we're about and that it's not what we'll tolerate. So, you know, I, I appreciate those comments. You're exactly right. I think there is another hand. Sarah Fulton? Are you here and would like to participate?
Hi, yes, I'm sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
So I was just gonna, just talking to the school community. My husband actually works at a middle school, and they are an expeditionary learning school. And they have a program called CREW. And CREW has just worked wonders for their community. All staff in a school has a CREW. It's kind of like a homeroom. And it's a particular program that the district could explore. But essentially, each staff member has a group of students. So K through five, that group of students would meet with that staff member. Usually with them, it's once a day, but it even could be once a week. They work on character education skills. They work on social identity skills. I just think that this program really needs to be, I mean, our whole nation really needs to get in on this program. Because then that, those students have that particular staff member that they build a relationship throughout their entire elementary years, throughout their entire middle school years, just that they can come back to and confide in. I think that that would be just a positive resource for our school community.
Yeah, thank you for offering the resource. And also even too, if it's not the resource, that particular resource, just harnessing the objectives. And so, you know, what are the takeaways? And the takeaways are that we want our kids educated and being able to talk fluently about their identities, support what, like, learn one, learn about others in a very authentic way. Have that curiosity, the mind for curiosity about others and learning cultural competency. Seeing injustice, naming injustice, being an allies, you know, being an ally, and then moving towards that action piece. And so those are the components that we're looking at, right? So certainly be doing a lot of work in that area to kind of flesh those things out. At this point, I am going to go into our closing. Because we just, so, you know, with all of this said, there were so many ideas that were put forth here. So at this point, where do we go from here? So this is just a starting point. I'm going to turn my camera back on here to end here, sorry. So it is just a starting point for ongoing, continuous discussion, involvement, and engagement. We will be working on developing a plan of action for 2020 and beyond based on all of these opportunities for community feedback throughout the summer and well into the school year. We know that Dear OLSD students would like, or no, I'm sorry. We know that Dear OLSD has linked in a survey to their Instagram page that asks for students, for changes students would like to see in the district. So this is a great avenue to provide input. We hope to be able to collaborate with Dear OLSD around those ideas and take steps to make needed changes. With our community at large, we hope to have roundtable discussions hosted at the district level to continue collaborating with stakeholders around what our plans should and could look like. As typical of a diversity committee meeting structure, we will be collecting all of the ideas that were shared here through chat and verbally, through public participation, and continue the ongoing dialogue with Superintendent Rafe. So he will be seeing all of these as he has listened in. And then we wanted to just also share ways to be involved. Like I said, there, there will be many. So just kind of keep a lookout on, on the district communications. You can join the diversity committee. So if you are interested in that, please reach out to me. My email is heather__cole@olsd.us. And I can make sure that we get you on the, the list serve there. And then just keep learning that, that curious, authentic quest to learn about yourself, your identity, the complexities, the intersectionalities, and also those of others. The Juneteenth calendar that we have, you know, the, the letter and then the associated resources and calendar that we have out has some really good stuff in there, but there are so many other opportunities as well. And just collaborating with us and others in your community. So we encourage you to keep the learning going, and we certainly will as well. Our emails will be on the ending slide here so that you can write those down if you would like them, to reach out to us with additional questions or concerns, or simply to just stay in contact. So at this point, I'd like to end our evening with a quote. Someone I follow a lot and just love her, her words of wisdom, wisdom, if you will. "In every community, there is work to be done. In every nation, there are wounds to heal. In every heart, there is the power to do it." And that's by Mary Ann Williamson. So thank you so much for participating. We look forward to future work together. Thank you so much.